First thing up, it's all the regular council meeting to order. We do have a quorum, and we've got one more on the way supposedly. We do have a consent agenda, treasurer's report addition for approval of minutes of October twenty second and approved payment of bills. Do we have the treasurer's report?
November twelfth, two thousand twenty four, treasurer's report. We have payable checks in the amount of two hundred seventy six thousand five hundred eighty three dollars and eighty cents. Of that two thousand seven hundred six, two hundred seventy six thousand five hundred eighty three dollars and eighty cents, two hundred forty one dollars and hundred, two hundred forty one thousand, one hundred and sixty one sixteen cents is for major vendors. I have a question. What is D C I, D S I?
It's electrical transformers.
Transformers?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And that's eighty seven percent of the payable checks. Payroll for November to include social security and Medicare, hundred fifty eight thousand ninety nine dollars and three cents. There are three monthly bond payments totaling one hundred fifty five thousand six hundred forty six dollars and eighty seven cents. Grand total payroll, payable checks and bond payments, five hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and twenty nine dollars and seventy cents.
Page persons. Now you get a motion to go through the motion. James makes a motion, give a second. Michael, second, clarification discussion, follow along.
Glenn?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, we're gonna start with introduction by Tim, if you can introduce your students, uh, to get this time.
Yeah, thank you, I've got Brian, Connor, um, Kaden, and Oscar from Waynesville, and Lake Wayne, and all my juniors.
Oh, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, guys. Okay, K P M. Audit time.
All right. Everybody's favorite.
Lot of results.
Everyone's favorites. The most riveting deal of the year. So this is the audit of fiscal year end of December thirty first, twenty twenty three. You should have a booklet and two writers. And we're gonna start on page four of the bound booklet.
Have a booklet.
So this is the independent auditor's report. For those that may not remember, I'm an audit service shareholder with K P M. And these are the audit financials for the year December first, twenty twenty three. The independent auditor's report is where we give our opinion on the financial statements. And, uh, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects in respect to financial position of governmental activities, business type activities, aggregated strictly presented. Only units each major fund in the aggregate are any non-major fund information the city, St. Barbara has of, presented through this conference in respect to changes in the position. So that is an unmodified or a clean opinion, and is the best possible result. And, you know, I think that a lot of people get the audit a little bit, uh, their perception of it maybe isn't exactly as reality. You can give them an unmodified opinion, just a matter of how much work and time you have to put in it to get there. And so, uh, this one has been a little bit of fun to get there, but we got there. And so, wanna thank the city staff for all their patience and, and work in helping us to get there as well, the city. The basis for our opinion is that we conducted our audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America, and the standards applicable to financialized, contained, and governed auditing standards issued by the legislature generally in the United States. As far as responsibilities of management, management is responsible for preparation and fair presentation of financial statements in accordance with prime principles generally accepted in the United States of America, and will design and provision of internal control relevant to preparation and fair presentation of financial statements that are free from material mistake, whether due to fraud or error. So basically, what this is saying is the city is responsible for financial statements. And as full disclosure, we do help in preparing the financial statements as a non-audit service. Just because we prepare a lot of financial statements, and it's kinda easier for us to do it, so that's a comment. So on the next thing, we'll get into numbers. And we're gonna turn over page nineteen. We'll be looking at the balance sheet for governmental funds, which are the general fund, the street fund, the capital improvement fund, and then a column there for major funds. And while you're turning there, I'm sure I'll miss some of these. The non-major funds are the Park and Pool Fund, Interstate Plaza Project Fund, TIP one and TIP three. All kinda aggregating. And so, on the general fund, you had total assets of three million nine hundred thirty thousand, four hundred fourteen dollars. That is up about two hundred fifty nine thousand from last year. About a hundred ninety seven thousand of that was an increase to cash. Uh, you had unrestricted cash of one million two hundred seventy five thousand, nine hundred ninety five dollars. Another big mover there was your sales tax receivable went up by about a hundred and twenty eight thousand, six hundred fifty eight thousand, one hundred fifty, one hundred and seventy eight dollars. So that's the balance sheet side. The piece that was down a little bit was leases receivable, it was down about a hundred twenty one thousand from last year, one million four hundred seven thousand, three hundred forty eight dollars. If you skip down here to the liability section, this is what offsets the assets. And you'll see that you had accounts payable of a hundred ninety two thousand, nine hundred thirty three dollars, accrued expenses of one hundred fifty six thousand, twenty seven dollars, or bonds payable, twenty eight thousand, seven hundred seventy six dollars, and due to other funds of five hundred seven thousand, four hundred thirty three dollars, for a total of eight hundred eighty five thousand, one hundred sixty nine dollars. And those liabilities are up about a hundred and seventy one thousand from last year. So if you take that against the increase to your assets of a hundred and fifty nine thousand, the gain really wasn't quite as much. A big chunk of that liability increase in the general fund was ninety seven thousand, five hundred fifty three dollars, payroll-related, uh, tax payable, and, uh, some things happened that generated a little bit of extra payroll tax. We'll kinda get into that here as we go through this report. On the deferred inflows of resources, you had leases at one million, three hundred ninety nine thousand, six dollars. That's down one hundred eleven thousand from last year. You had an ending fund balance of one million, five hundred ninety seven thousand, five hundred twenty two dollars, which is up about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and ninety nine thousand from last year. Overall, the nature of picture of the general fund was not bad in twenty twenty three, it turned out pretty good. On your street fund, you had a total assets of six hundred sixteen thousand, eight hundred seventy five dollars. That's down about three hundred fifty four thousand. Cash was down about two hundred thousand at three hundred eight thousand, one hundred twenty four dollars. And the, uh, sales taxes were up at forty one thousand, at two hundred sixty nine thousand, eight hundred eighty seven dollars. Intergovernmental receivables or grants receivable was down about two hundred and two thousand compared to last year. Had prepaid expenses of eleven thousand, three hundred twenty three dollars, which was down about fifteen thousand compared to last year. So that's kinda the changes for the year. On the liability side, you had total liabilities of one hundred ninety two thousand, three hundred fifty one dollars. That is down five hundred and forty three thousand from last year. Also, you had previously in last year, two hundred and two thousand of unavailable revenue that's been recognized in this year. So you end the year with a fund balance of four hundred twenty four thousand, five hundred twenty four dollars, which is up about three hundred ninety one thousand from last year. On your capital improvement fund, total cash increased by about twenty thousand to three hundred fifty eight thousand, six hundred forty two dollars. Sales taxes receivable were up about forty thousand over last year, two hundred seventy nine thousand, two hundred fourteen dollars. So the total gain in assets was about sixty one thousand from last year at six hundred twenty nine thousand, eight hundred fifty six dollars. And that is the change in fund balance as well. On those non-major funds, you had a net cash decrease of three hundred eighty three thousand, and six hundred ten thousand, three hundred eighty three dollars. Sales taxes receivable was up about twenty thousand, one hundred thirty four thousand, nine hundred forty three dollars. Most everything else was steady, so, and you ended with total assets of eight hundred ninety four thousand, seven hundred thirty three dollars. That's down about three hundred sixty one thousand from last year. On the liability side, total liabilities were five hundred ninety five thousand, sixty four dollars. That is down about two hundred and eight thousand over last year. So you had a net decrease in fund balance of about a hundred fifty three thousand dollars to end at two hundred ninety nine thousand, six hundred sixty nine dollars. So across all of your governmental funds, uh, you had total ending fund balances of two million, nine hundred fifty one thousand, five hundred seventy one dollars, which is up about four hundred ninety eight thousand from last year. Ending in the black is good. Any questions on that? If not, we'll skip a page, uh, get to page twenty one, which is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes to fund balances of those same funds. That will not take quite as much left unless you want more numbers. So, uh, total revenues in the general fund were ultimately down about a hundred eighty six thousand from last year at four million, seven hundred fifty seven thousand, four hundred fifteen dollars. And the bulk of that was a decrease in grant revenue from last year, so that was unexpected. Your tax revenue overall was up about two hundred fifty one thousand compared to last year, three million, nine hundred seventy five thousand, four hundred ninety nine dollars. On the expenditure side of things for the general fund, you had seven million, eight hundred seventy five thousand, thirty seven dollars, which is up about one point four million dollars over last year. And you had a lot of stuff going on, and that is no surprise to any of you, I'm sure. Voluble was a decrease before transfers of other Canadian sources and uses, three million, one hundred seventeen thousand, six hundred twenty two dollars. You had a sale of property of four hundred five thousand, one hundred ninety four dollars. Insurance proceeds of eleven thousand, five hundred thirty six dollars. And a transfer again of two point nine million to end with a positive, uh, gain for the year of one hundred ninety nine thousand, one hundred eighty dollars. And a balance of one million, five hundred ninety seven thousand, five hundred twenty two dollars. On the street fund, total revenues were two million, ninety thousand, four hundred forty seven dollars. That's up about eighty one thousand. The bulk of that, of course, is tax revenue, which is up about ninety one thousand over last year at one million, eight hundred eighteen thousand, seventeen dollars. On the total expenditures for that fund, you had one million, nine hundred ninety six thousand, three hundred fifty seven dollars. And that was down about eight hundred sixty three thousand, uh, primarily in capital outlay cost. Capital outlay was down about seven hundred seventy eight thousand from the previous year at eight hundred eighty four thousand, eight hundred sixty four dollars. So we had a gain before, uh, other sources and uses of ninety four thousand, ninety dollars. And you had proceeds from debt issuance of two hundred ninety seven thousand, six hundred twenty dollars, which gave you an increase for the year of three hundred ninety one thousand, seven hundred ten dollars, ending fund balance of four hundred twenty four thousand, five hundred twenty four dollars. Capital improvement fund, taxes are up about eighteen thousand at one million, five hundred sixty thousand, nine hundred thirteen dollars. Expenses, but the transfer is out, twenty twenty five million. And that left a gain for the year of sixty thousand, nine hundred thirteen dollars, and a net balance of six hundred twenty nine thousand, eight hundred fifty six dollars. And on the non-major funds, total revenues were one million, six hundred ten thousand, nine hundred seventy four dollars, which is up about seven thousand from last year. You had a one million, eight hundred fourteen thousand, twenty nine dollars in expenses. Kinda breaking it down here, park at three hundred seven thousand, nine hundred sixty two dollars. That's down about two hundred and seven thousand from the previous year. But your capital outlay expenses were six hundred four thousand, nine hundred fifty five dollars, which is up about two hundred and fifteen thousand. And then debt service, of course, principal interest was nine hundred one thousand, three hundred twelve dollars. And that's down about two thousand from last year. So overall, the net change in your excess deficit of revenues over expenses was about a thousand dollars difference from last year, and a decrease of two hundred three thousand, fifty five dollars. You had, uh, transfers in at fifty thousand, and that left a gain for the year of one hundred fifty, or excuse me, loss for the year at one hundred fifty three thousand, fifty five dollars, and a ending fund balance of two hundred ninety nine thousand, six hundred sixty nine dollars. Across all of your funds, as I mentioned before, you had a gain across all government funds of four hundred ninety eight thousand, six hundred seventy six dollars, and ended with fund balances of two million, nine hundred fifty one thousand, five hundred seventy four dollars. And the governmental funds, any questions on those? Not, we'll turn over page twenty three. I'm looking at a little bit more financial information, it's gonna be a fast one. So this is the statement of acquisition for your proprietary funds, which are the electric fund, water sewer fund, gas fund, and the solid waste transfer station fund. And you have total assets in your electric fund of eight million, two hundred fifty eight thousand, nine hundred fifty four dollars, total down about a hundred and twenty two thousand from last year. And you had deferred outflows of resources relating to your loggers, uh, involvement, at one hundred thirty thousand, forty dollars. That's up about fifteen thousand from last year. On your water and sewer fund, you have total assets of thirty seven million, forty seven thousand, nine hundred ninety four dollars. That's up six point five million dollars primarily because you're adding to your capital asset total pot through the transfer, uh, through the solid waste processing center, basically, put in. Uh, compliments. And then you had deferred pension outflow of eighty two thousand, four hundred ninety five dollars, which is up about eleven thousand. Gas fund had total assets of one million, two hundred forty nine thousand, three hundred thirty two dollars. That's up about seventy five thousand from last year. And the deferred pension outflow is twenty three thousand, nine hundred eighty two dollars, which is up about two thousand from last year. Solid transfer, solid waste transfer station fund, you had total assets of two million, five hundred eighty four thousand, four dollars. That's up by about four thousand from last year. And then the deferred pension outflow was thirty two thousand, three hundred ninety one dollars, which is up about thirteen thousand. So your total assets across all of these funds were forty nine million, one hundred forty thousand, two hundred eighty four dollars. That is up about six point four million from last year, primarily due to sewer plant. Deferred pension outflows were two hundred sixty eight thousand, eight hundred forty four dollars, which is up about forty three, one thousand from last year. On the next page is the other half of the equation, with liabilities and deferred inflows of resources under acquisition for those same funds. And you had total current liabilities of one million in electric fund, one million, seven hundred twenty eight thousand, five hundred fifty six dollars. That's up about four hundred ninety seven thousand from last year. And a chunk of that is what we see in accounts payable there, a hundred ninety seven thousand, one hundred seventy six dollars. And that is another piece of that payable thing within the general fund as well. And we'll see it again in the water and sewer fund, and we'll talk about it later. The total liabilities in the electric fund were one million, eight hundred seventy three thousand, eight, eight hundred eighty one dollars, which is up about three hundred eight thousand from last year. The deferred pension inflows were down about fifty thousand from the prior year at ninety five thousand, nine hundred seventy three dollars. And the total net position was six million, four hundred nineteen thousand, five hundred forty dollars, which is down about three hundred sixty four thousand from last year. On the water and sewer fund, uh, total current liabilities were three million, two hundred ten thousand, four hundred thirty two dollars. It's up about four hundred and eight thousand. Again, there's a hundred ninety five thousand paid over there in the liabilities, and that is kinda abnormal. And then, uh, retained payables up about seventy four thousand from last year at five hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred twenty eight dollars. Total liabilities were fifteen million, three hundred eighty three thousand, one hundred fifty nine dollars. That's up about two point eight million from last year. And the deferred pension inflows were seventy two thousand, nine hundred thirty two dollars, which is down about thirty eight thousand from last year. And the total net position was twenty one million, six hundred seventy four thousand, three hundred seventy nine dollars, which is up about three point seven million from last year. And mostly, that's the capital project going on to build solid assets out of the ledger. And it'll be depreciated off over its use for life. On the gas fund, you had total liabilities of two hundred eighty three thousand, two hundred ninety four dollars. And that's down about twenty two thousand. The deferred pension inflow was nineteen thousand, two hundred seventy three dollars, which is down about eight thousand from last year. And total net position was nine hundred seventy thousand, six hundred eighty six dollars, which is up about a hundred and seven thousand from last year. Last but not least, is the solid waste transfer station fund, which had total liabilities of four hundred six thousand, six hundred and four dollars. That is down about eighty seven thousand from last year in liabilities. The deferred pension inflow was seventy six thousand, eight hundred thirty two dollars, it's down about forty five thousand from last year. And the total net position was two million, two hundred eighty six thousand, six hundred twenty three dollars, which is up a hundred and forty nine thousand. So overall, the net position for all of these funds was thirty one million, three hundred fifty four thousand, two hundred twenty eight dollars, which is up about three point seven million from last year. Any questions on those? It's a lot of numbers in there, I'm sorry. It was a lot of, uh, supporting data to support all of it. So, uh, the next page is, uh, page twenty five, shooting the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position. This is the income statement for those same funds. I just kinda wanted to point out the operating income or loss by fund across here because, well, they're all popular. So, uh, on the electric fund, you had an operating income of one million, three hundred nine thousand, six hundred sixty dollars. On the water and sewer fund, your operating income is four hundred sixty three thousand, seven hundred eighty nine dollars. And the gas fund, let's see, it's a hundred and seven thousand, four hundred, six hundred forty two dollars. And then on solid waste transfer station fund, it was an operating income of a hundred seven thousand, four hundred eighteen dollars. And that's a positive sign for a great structure and that sort of thing, that you're bringing in enough operating revenue to cover the costs of operating systems. And not all cities have that situation, that's for disclosure. Overall, in the electric fund, we had non-operating items of seventy four thousand, one hundred twelve dollars in net expense. The transfer is out of one point five million dollars, that's how you go to decrease three hundred sixty four thousand, four hundred fifty two dollars, and leaves the ending acquisition of six million, four hundred nineteen thousand, seven hundred forty dollars. In the water and sewer fund, there were net non-operating expenses of five hundred thirty six thousand, eighty dollars. That's down about two hundred thousand from last year. There were capital contributions of three million, eight hundred thirty four thousand, six hundred thirty four dollars. That's down about one point four million from last year. And all leaves you with a change in net position, three million, seven hundred sixty two thousand, two hundred forty dollars. Ending balance of twenty million, six hundred thirty four thousand, three hundred seventy nine dollars. The gas fund, there were net non-operating expenses of seven hundred thirty nine dollars, which left the increase for the year of one hundred six thousand, nine hundred three dollars, and ending balance of nine hundred seventy thousand, six hundred twenty six dollars. And again, last but not least, is the solid waste transfer station fund, had net non-operating expense of eight hundred forty four, eight thousand, four hundred forty five dollars, which is up about two thousand from last year, transfer in at fifty thousand. And I gave the fund a gain of one hundred forty eight thousand, nine hundred seventy three dollars. Ending net position, two million, two hundred eighty six thousand, six hundred twenty three dollars. Overall, financially, in twenty twenty three, I would say, it was all. Any questions? If you can applaud, that's the end of the numbers, I think. Accounting portion of this is over. Okay, so we're gonna turn over page eighty. So we skipped them quite a bit, but, uh, this is the state of findings and question costs, and when it gets into material weaknesses, it are reported in this report. We did have a single audit that's reported in the paper preceding this. It's a single audit because of the FEMA project primarily. But for the sake of time, we'll just run through these internal control, uh, items that we have. The first one is one that if you've been to a audit presentation for a city, it's very common. It deals with segregation duties, specifically the lack of segregation duties. And they'll basically have a limited number of people available to do the accounting transaction cycle. So people won't be touching more proportions of that than maybe they should in an optimal control setting. And so, it leads to a situation where, you know, there's incompatible activities happening. And that doesn't mean that wrong things are happening, or people are doing various things. It just means that there is an open and controlled structure for that to happen. It's a very common thing in municipalities, and we see it on a very regular basis. But the standards say we have to call it out, and say, hey, you do have this, just as a reminder, and do the best you can with what you have. So opportunities that you have for mitigating controls, you wanna take very seriously. Things like reviewing check registers and checking budget versus actual, and that kind of thing. All of those are mitigating controls to a lack of segregation duties. And as a board, we all might be involved in it to some degree. So those things are important. Next thing is, uh, I have twenty twenty three dash O two, bank account reconciliation process. And during the year, the bank records weren't completed in a timely manner. I think this is being cleaned up over time. The problem is that twenty two got finished up and resolved late. We pushed twenty three further into the audit year. So some of this is getting better as we move through time. And so, uh, but because it existed during the year, that's again something that we have to mention. So basically, we're recommending that, you know, with limited resources and personnel and things, and there's steps that need to happen with bank records, and you need to have in time, and it is a good control for the city, because you do have a lack of segregation duties. So having a solid bank record process is important. And that involves not just going into the bank rec module and clearing checks, the clearing the bank, but also checking to see that the bank balance reconciled matches to the ledger balances, because that's the final step. And I think that's the part that with your software, G-Works, it's easy to kinda miss out on, a lot of cities do. I think once they go through the bank rec module, logically, you think, okay, I think the balances were okay. But there's kinda another step they don't really call out, obviously. And so, that could cause some confusion when the bank rec is actually done, if that makes sense. So I think that education's happened, and, you know, I think the process is happening now. So hopefully, the city's on sound footing moving forward. On the next page, it's I have the twenty twenty three dash O three. I kinda alluded to this earlier, it's a yellow book compliance finding, uh, because it deals with laws and regulations. And through, uh, I think a misunderstanding of how payroll was happening on G-Works, the city failed to remit the payroll taxes to the federal and state authorities. The check was being cut, it was going into outstanding, but it was never cleared in the bank. Because there was another step to do to go in and make an electronic transfer, because they wanted electronic. So basically, what you had was an accumulation of outstanding items that piled up. So this, when you're looking at a report for cash, it's coming out of your cash, and you're like, okay, well, okay. And cash is tracking along like you would expect it to. But what was also happening was your outstanding check register amount total was getting larger and larger and larger every month. So also tied to that, the Fed in particular doesn't like it when things are paid late, and to them, it was paid late. So there's penalties and interest and things accrued. The group of people have been very diligently to sort all of that out since May. And I think we're there.
Yeah, those two warriors.
I think there's, I look back at the notice, and this, the, the thing that the city just did care of was second quarter twenty three through, uh, second quarter of twenty four, I believe. So that part's covered, there's a couple of strangling things that go back, way back.
I don't think I heard you correctly. You said the checks were sent in, but the bank didn't clear them?
The checks processed in G-Works and went into the outstanding check register. But the way it is set up to function is that it generates a check that is basically voided from the get-go. And you're supposed to do an electronic transfer of the thing through E F T P S. And so, that, that step didn't get done.
So is it a bank error then, or?
It's not a bank error, it was a city error. So.
So it says penalties, are we gonna be charged penalties?
Yes.
Yes.
Those liability increases that I was talking about earlier in the general fund, the electric fund, and the water sewer fund, there's a hundred, or four hundred and thirty-ish thousand, I think, was that?
Four hundred and four.
And.
Four hundred and thirty eight thousand, is that what you said?
Yes. So that's been accrued in these financial statements. And it has since been settled, I think, with that as part of that.
And we're starting with check process.
So they, they don't mess around. So anyway, that's, that's the situation that exists. I think it's very close to being resolved at this point, and the process has been fixed so that it's not ongoing.
I certainly hope it's been resolved, that's a lot of money.
It is the chunk to be fair. We are. We are working with trying to get the IRS to evade it. Can't make any guarantees about that. The city's paid it just to satisfy it so things wouldn't continue to build. But, I, I think there's still an off chance that the IRS would evade some of it. And, but again, we can't guarantee that they will. The problem is normally they give you kind of one get out of jail free card. And that means you have to have a very long track record of doing things right. So, that one mess up doesn't sink it. But, there were little things back that predated the current, uh, employees. That kind of led to the non-opinion spending. So, I'm not sure how the abatement things are gonna go. It doesn't hurt to try, and we'll just keep trying.
So, errors cost us four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Okay.
So... Anyway, that's the...
Oh, sorry.
I couldn't remember the time is up.
Stay on to it. I thought, what, the world's...
Alright, so, so that's the, that is an odd and unique situation that was encountered there. I, I don't, I don't experience that before, but, yes.
This particular amount of money you talked about for penalties, has that concluded our dealing with IRS by paying this amount? Or are we still faced for it?
So, there's some stuff that's kind of pending that are way smaller and less important to the IRS. That goes back to like twenty sixteen and whatever. Those amounts are way smaller, we won't reveal them here. So, I don't think it's quite as impactful.
John, those were paid. What we have left to pay is the last two quarters of twenty twenty-two. And I think, that's the email she sent me, Patty.
I looked at the notice, and it was basically covering the twenty-three through twenty-four amount.
No, I'm talking about what wouldn't pay.
Last two quarters of twenty-three, first two quarters of twenty-four, right?
Right.
I'll have to step back here.
They have not processed the second and third quarter of twenty twenty-two and the first quarter of twenty twenty-three, so we still owe for those.
So, we don't, we don't set out on that, but it's...
The money was sent in, like payroll taxes.
The taxes have ended, all of that's happened.
Yeah.
But, the IRS has determined what, if any, penalties that might be associated. So, we don't have an annual payment. This is not necessarily my area of expertise, once you get into dealing with IRS. But, uh, we do have a person in the office who is very handy in that particular area. Has been working with Gregory, the, the mayor, to get things situated. So, I think we're on the cusp. Hopefully, it's, hopefully not a lot more. Any questions on that? If not, I would encourage you to read the two sealed letters that accompany the booklet. Not right now, but maybe closer to that time. Not a whole lot exciting in there. There's the standard letter from us auditors to those charged with governance, which is all of them. And it basically kind of goes through, it's our last chance to pad it. I don't think there's anything crazy that they haven't already covered here. The other letter is just more about operational improvements, guidelines and things. Suggestions for operation improvement. And you can kind of read through those recommendations at your leisure. And I'll let you get on with your meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Yes, sir, I'm back.
And we'll move right along. Next item is an ordinance accepting proposal of United Health Insurance, or health, for twenty twenty-five health insurance. Three dozen bill, please.
Oh, there he is. Bill number twenty-four dash zero nine zero. An ordinance accepting the proposal of United Healthcare for twenty twenty-five health insurance and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for employee health insurance.
A motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Motion by James Second. Walter, Walter Second, clarification, discussion, call her.
Glenn.
Real quick question here.
Does this include spousal care as well?
Yes, there's spousal, one hundred and eighteen thousand, is it left included?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Second reading.
Bill number twenty-four dash zero nine zero. An ordinance accepting the proposal of United Healthcare for twenty twenty-five health insurance and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for employee health insurance.
Got a motion on the second reading. Michael makes a motion, James Second, clarification, discussion, call her.
Glenn?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Ordinance please.
Ordinance number four zero nine nine. An ordinance accepting the proposal of United Healthcare for twenty twenty-five health insurance and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for employee health insurance.
Hey, got a motion on the reading and the ordinance. Linda makes a motion, uh, John Second, clarification, discussion, call her.
Glenn?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Three point three is an ordinance accepting the twenty twenty-five renewal of insurance for, uh, MetLife for life, disability, and vision, previsibility.
Bill number twenty-four dash zero nine one. An ordinance accepting the twenty twenty-five renewal of insurance with MetLife for life, disability, dental, and vision insurance coverage.
Hey, got a motion on the first reading. Walter makes a motion, Michael Second, clarification, discussion, call her.
Glenn?
Did we have an increase on this particular issue?
No.
The first one we did?
Yeah, there was an increase on the first one.
The, the medical side.
Sixteen percent.
This is MetLife.
I wish I knew one. Okay. I would have said no. Uh, yes on this one.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Second reading.
Bill number twenty-four dash zero nine one. An ordinance accepting the twenty twenty-five renewal of insurance with MetLife for life, disability, dental, and vision insurance coverage.
Hey, got a motion on the second reading.
Motion.
Glenn makes a motion, Linda Second, clarification, discussion, call her.
Glenn?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Ordinance please.
Ordinance number four one zero zero. An ordinance accepting the twenty twenty-five renewal of insurance with MetLife for life, disability, dental, and vision insurance coverage.
Hey, got a motion on the reading and the ordinance. John makes a motion, James Second, clarification, discussion, call her.
Glenn? Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Okay, next ordinance is, uh, ordinance for trash cans, uh, residential, uh, trash cans and dumpsters. Roll-offs is increasing costs, going from thirteen to fifteen dollars per house. It has a trash can, and there's a, it's a fifteen percent review that we're doing on the dumpsters. Okay.
Uh, we went into commercial in twenty twenty, and we haven't raised our rates since then there.
Or the residential.
Or the residential. We, right, last time we raised, it was two thousand and six.
And you heard what the auditor said, the, the income, uh, just barely squeaked through and you need to look at rates. So, you know, can you read this bill, please?
Bill number twenty-four dash zero nine two. An ordinance admitting the city of Saint Robert rate schedule for residential and commercial trash services and dumpster roll-off rentals.
A motion on that. Glenn makes a motion, who's that, John down there?
No.
Clarification, discussion, call her.
Glenn?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number twenty-four dash zero nine two. An ordinance admitting the city of Saint Robert rate schedule for residential and commercial trash services and dumpster roll-off rentals.
A motion on the second reading. Walter makes a motion, James Second, clarification, discussion, call her.
Glenn?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John? Ordinance please.
Ordinance number four one zero one. An ordinance admitting the city of Saint Robert rate schedule for residential and commercial trash services and dumpster roll-off rentals.
Got a motion on the reading and the ordinance. James makes a motion, Michael Second, clarification, discussion, call her.
Glenn?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Okay, we're down to the next committee meetings, wage finance. We're gonna have to call, uh, Linda, uh, our next meeting. We got the election over with, uh, I don't know when our next meeting is.
Um, I don't know, we have to get towards my budget.
It's the first part of, yes. So, we gotta have that approved going into that, so we'll have a...
When's the next meeting? When's that?
Early December, I think.
Oh, can't see it. The next...
Only station, is it?
Our next, our next meeting is, no.
It says nineteen if needed, and then December third.
December third is our next meeting.
Probably. We usually do the budget for the first meeting in December.
Okay, so we'll have to have, um, a, a finance meeting before the third of December. Which is gonna be pushing it, because that's the week, that week before is Thanksgiving week. Well, we don't have to have it on a Tuesday, do we?
Tuesday night at nine. When is tomorrow before the...
Twelve?
Twenty-sixth?
Linda, can I get with you on make note? Because, I mean... Anytime is fine with me, so you set up a date and it's fine with me, so...
Let everybody know, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all that works, we need anything?
No.
We got the truck coming in the next two weeks.
They said after, in the first part of December sometime.
Yeah. The hoopla? No. Now, emergency services, anything? Court committee? Okay, comments by administration, finance, Frederick.
Um, we have, uh...
Good job on the other.
Okay. Yeah, we found out some information, and we got that corrected. Uh, we have other people involved in the reconciliation and everything, books. So, we've already started with that, um... I've got the tax information in, the sales tax information. Our general sales tax, uh, for October was up about fifteen percent. Yeah. Um, sales, use tax number two, um, came in at sixteen thousand dollars.
Use tax number two?
The use tax number one, huh?
Is use tax number two the marijuana tax?
The use tax number two is, has to be use tax number two by state law.
Oh, okay.
Um, our use tax number one, uh, is up...
Record that live on channel twelve.
Well... It's up about, um, thirteen thousand from the previous, uh, pre, from last year. Um, both our capital, let's see. Our sales tax is running about, about fifteen percent up across the board.
Okay, what's the balance now?
Uh, we're, we're setting at two point three.
Okay. Okay, Dana's not here tonight?
No.
Steve? Would you like to talk to us?
Me already?
Yeah.
Uh, started, um, working on the baseball field, hauled some dirt in. We knocked it down today so the rain wouldn't, you know, set on the piles so bad. I did talk to, uh, Willard, they said they would get over there as soon as it dried up. I'm not sure where they can level it all up and, and pack it in and, and kind of grade it out a little bit. But, we are working on at least knocking it down, so...
They're just building the infield, yeah. Just the infield is all they're doing.
Yeah, just the infield. Um, we also had a, um, an old water main on a flatener that didn't get capped off properly. I guess when, when, uh, new main got put in. So, it, it's taken all these years, and it's finally starting to surface out of the old hydrants where they took in the hydrants off. So, we had to go around spot dig quite a few different places. Nobody was over there when it was, when the new line was put in. So, we didn't know what the contractors had actually done. Uh, the plans that we had didn't match up with, with what valves was in the roads there. So, we're still, we're better shape knowing what, how everything's running, but we still don't know for exactly the positive. We did get it capped off right around Burson Street. So, from Old Route sixty-six to Burson, there's still an old main that's live in there that we're gonna, or, we're gonna have to do something with. We'll probably go all the way back up to, uh, Old Route sixty-six. Because there is a poss, possibility that it couldn't buy a stone in there. And, uh, it's, it's live, but it's not under full pressure. They did somehow or another, they didn't get it shut, shut down properly. So, it builds up pressure. But, the rest of the neighborhood is, is actually capped off now, so we shouldn't be seeing any water surface out of those old hydrants.
Okay.
During the storms, the, the treatment plant and a portion of Zingan Mine was out of power for around three hours, I think. Treatment plant done, done fairly well. Generators all started up, everything run okay.
Did the old treatment plant area get flooded?
Uh, I don't think water got into it.
No.
I think it got close, but, um, maybe it didn't get up into it. Um, we submitted our lead and copper inventory to, uh, DNR and EPA. So, we completed all of that. There was about thirty homes out of all the homes in, in Saint Robert that we couldn't verify. So, we had to send them letters. We, we got them by door hangers. And I think they was, uh, putting those out today. And they, they got about half of those that they was able to go in and look at, uh, see what kind of pipe was coming up into that home, verify it, so that, we're supposed to do ten percent every year and report back to EPA, but we've already gotten fifty percent of the ones that we couldn't, couldn't. So, I, I'd say we'll have the rest of them probably here before too long.
So, you don't have to do it for the next five years, right?
Yeah, we won't have to do, um, yeah, that, that kind of took care of it. So, um, I think that was it.
Yeah, thank you. John's out here from Mr. Zinkan Mine. Done holiday.
I got some, uh, numbers for the special collections, electric, uh, electronic that we did at the pool parking lot. Uh, we had, uh, seventy cars and trucks come by. And we did, uh, point forty-seven tons of tires. And we did, uh, two point seven tons of electronics come in. Then I got the tonnage report for October. We did five thousand and eighty-seven tons, and, uh, two hundred and thirty-one was the average.
You got a new four of twenty fifteen.
Yep.
From last week, and you hit three hundred and some tons today.
Yep.
Good job, okay. Okay, Charles?
So, on October twenty-sixth, we had our, uh, trunk or treat in the park event. Uh, it was a great success, a lot of people came through. We had, we tried to count as best we could, and we, I think we got around twenty-seven hundred people.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, it was a lot more than what we expected. Uh, I want to thank the, the police department for their help with it, and the fire department. Uh, they both participated and handed out candy. Our next event is Christmas in the Park on December eighth. We're still looking for vendors for that. Uh, Landmark Aquatic from Saint Louis, they came down and they're gonna get us quotes for replacing the floor grates at, in the outdoor pool. Those are supposed to be replaced every five years, and we're still, we still have the original ones that will be about fifteen years old. Uh, they're gonna come back down... Uh, they're gonna come back down later this month to help us monterize the rest of the way. Ozark playsets at the lake, they also came down, uh, for, to measure for new shade campies for the top of our water slides. Um, I don't know if you had been to the pool last summer, but we just got tarps from Lowe's because the original ones broke down and, and tore over time. The RV park up at the commu-, well, not the RV park, at the community center, the evacuation park at the community center has eight campers still from the flooding that happened on the Ruby due. But, uh, I was told by Trey at, from their parks and rec department that they should be back up in operation by the end of this week. But...
Andrew, what do you know?
Yes, uh, yeah, about twenty dollars per night. Um, we have a pretty good system now in place.
Okay, good. Mark? Travis is coaching basketball for Lundy Hating, so he couldn't be here, but basketball's going well with, um, WSR. Surely it's going well. Um, just an update, RV park, year-to-date reservations, under eighty-two thousand, three hundred seventy-eight dollars last month, nineteen thousand, eight hundred sixty-five, last three months, sixty-eight. So we continue to rent our RV park at ninety-six percent rental rate. I think tonight, there's one empty spot that that one fills up tomorrow. So it's going very well down there. The park's doing a good job with that and just hopefully it continues and we'll keep moving on. Yeah, it's about two hundred thousand dollars of interest, so it'll take three years to pay it back. Yep. Keep it going. Good times, anything broken?
Um, Mayor and I and Anita and Mark met with the GFL, the owner of Black, Black Oak, which is our, uh, landfill. And, uh, we had a very nice meeting, came to an agreement on the contract. Uh, it seems that both sides, we had the old contract back from about two fifteen, two sixteen. We had raises, percentage raises to both their Black, at Black Oak and at, uh, our transfer station, which we'll ignore. So we're, we were sitting on the, uh, gate rate that, uh, we had back in fifteen. So they agreed to fifty-five dollars. And, uh, they've raised our, uh...
Fifty-five dollars for their constant? Fifty-five dollars for their trucks, donkey?
That's fifty-five dollars for them on the does.
Per ton.
And, and, uh, we're, I think, twenty-nine, twenty-five on the gate rate at Black Oak. And so, uh...
Twenty-seven.
Our spread, our gross income increases considerably with those raises. We're negotiating the contract. They sent me a standard contract. Uh, there was a provision in there that we have to have, uh, environmental pollution coverage, which Anita's got us for us, and liability, and we have to name them as additional maintenance insurance. So we should have that done shortly. We've got a couple other small clauses, but I think by the, uh, next meeting, we should be able to put a contract with Black Oak on you all. And, uh, actually with the numbers I'm looking at, it will put us in the black for quite a while. So, uh, our, uh, our gross profit per ton based, uh, spread between the, is really, really good for us now. So that's all I've got, Mayor.
Yeah, we gotta work on that.
Oh, yes, I filed, I filed suit against, uh, um...
Oh, my God.
The trailer park, Oak, is it Oakwood? Trailer park that owes us money on that single meter. And I said those people, and, uh, on the nuisances in town, uh, I believe, Mayor, we have a clause in our ordinances which allow us to use, uh, uh, injunction relief to cure nuisances. And I believe that rather than the very cumbersome thing where we pay or we use a receiver, what we need to do is file for a mandatory injunction and have the court order these people to clean the land up. Then if they don't, then we have a contempt of court on it. And that, if we can get that done, then we can use that court procedure and probably save the city a ton of money.
No, I don't want to... The one on Kempell?
Yeah, I believe that we're, we're gonna, I'm gonna use the mandatory injunction. The first one will be Oak, uh, Oakwood Prairie Trailer Park.
Well, I want, I want Kempell.
And the, and the, and the one on Y Highway.
Yeah, that's over.
Or, uh, and, and whatever, whatever that...
It's off of Y Highway, yeah.
Yeah. So those two, I should have filed by the end of first weekend to December.
Okay.
So we're, it, it's a new methodology of clear nuisances, which doesn't cost us a lot of money. So we're gonna try it a couple times.
Okay. Anita?
Chief Currington wrote a grant for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It was a federal grant to help pay for, uh, patrolman wages and it had a veteran component to it. And for a year, he didn't have anybody to fill that, so he thought he lost it. And, uh, he got two new officers and they both have the veteran component. And so they're gonna allow us to use the two hundred and fifty thousand to pay their wages for the next three years.
Cool.
We have a meeting tomorrow at eleven, um, to tell us, the lady's gonna meet with me and Brad and Curtis to walk us through how to do it and how to get refunded and do reports and everything. So Chief is really excited about that. That will, um, save his, uh, his, his dollars and his budget. Like, uh, Ty said, I've been working on pollution control insurance. I know more about that than I'll ever need to know. We had a gas commission meeting, um, and they're talking about us having a mild winter in our reserve funds, how we're gonna, how the group is gonna set them aside. We're one of several cities that are in the gas commission. And we're at the end and we pay all the little gate rates for everyone we go through. So, um, we have to go through that. We also have, uh, um, Friday, we have at the airport at the new terminal building a ribbon cutting or a groundbreaking ceremony for that. I think it starts at ten, doesn't it, John?
Yes.
Well, I'm, I have new eyes, so I have to figure out when I'm supposed to put these on and ring my notes and then I can't see if I look at you, so. Uh, the veteran cemetery, um, there, Reese Across America, December the fourteenth at eleven, if you want to get that on your calendar now, um, if you're planning on going. Um, other than that, um, we have a platener CID meeting tomorrow, me and the mayor and Linda. And that is on that interstate property that we have for platener.
Ten o'clock?
Yes, and you can call them, Mayor.
Okay.
So we have that done. The Neon Park, they're still working on it. We're waiting on the security system from dawn, so we're gonna have to get on that pretty quick. And we've been working on collections, so that's about all I have, Mayor.
Can we get that check Saturday?
We got the check. It was a personal check, so if it clears, we'll see.
I didn't know if we could call the bank and ask, or...
Yeah.
It's the Wells Fargo Bank in Newtown. It'll be sent into the bank this evening.
Okay. Okay, the next regular Board of Alderman meeting will be eleven nineteen if needed, or ten three. So I'd count on ten three for sure. Uh, the meeting is being closed pursuant to the three law, chapter six, ten dash one two one.
Ty, you didn't have anything for clothes, do you say?
Oh, there's no clothes? Really?
I think we need to do one of our idle meetings.
Okay. Anybody, anything else? Motion, okay. You have a motion to close the meeting?
Yes, sir.
Motion.
James makes a motion, John Second, clarification, discussion, call roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
So...
Okay. Good job.